I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting, 25 call have room 100, Wednesday, July 22nd, 2015, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Mrs. Congdon.
Present.
Mr. Jovian.
Present.
Mr. Lozo.
Present.
Mr. Olivo.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Mrs. Quinney.
Present.
Seven present.
Seven present, we have a call. Moving on to agenda item number three, interim superintendent. I'd like to introduce Steve Bliss. Mr. Bliss, could you sit on the end here and we will start the interview?
Thank you, Ms. Loza.
Bliss, you're on.
Sure, thank you very much. If I could indulge the school committee and the viewing public for a few minutes, I have a something in the way of an opening statement. Would that be okay with you, Ms. Loza?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to thank all members of the Southbridge School Committee for considering me for this leadership post in what is undeniably critical time in the history of the Southbridge Schools. The composition of both the Southbridge School Committee and the Town Council is in large part what intrigued, inspired, and excited me to return home to Southbridge at this decisive time in the history of the school system. We currently have individuals on the school committee and the town council who share in common a deep-seated investment in doing what is best for the students, families, residents, and business leaders in the town. Change is not always easy, but for those of us who live in and or love this community, swift change is needed in the direction of the schools. About that, there is no debate. It is only appropriate to thank the generations of Southbridge educators who devoted their lives and careers to the students and families of this town spanning decades, for each has played her or his part in helping meet the educational as well social and emotional needs of our kids. Many of those people are still around and some still hold office. We need only look to our current school committee members to see many of those people. Additionally, and more recently, there are good, talented, and well-intentioned educators in our schools who want the best for the children of Southbridge. Some of those people are seated here this evening, including Acting Superintendent Cheryl Stanton, who should be thanked for assuming the helm amidst much turbulence last year and for demonstrating professionalism in doing so and in reconciling the change in leadership potentially to be voted this evening. Thank you to the administrators and instructional leadership teams at each school and to all Southbridge educators. I know it is sometimes challenging to see all that you contribute, but if you are committed to turning the district around, committed to instructional excellence for every child in every classroom, every day, committed to the reality, not the notion, that every student can learn and is college-bound, committed to trying new approaches and humble enough to know when things are not working, committed to identifying the specific learning needs of all and committed to assisting each of us grow as practitioners, you are now part of a new campaign to make Southbridge a school system of choice instead of a school system plagued by school choice. If this charge and challenge excites and inspires you, superb. If not, and if you do not subscribe to the idea of the team, then this is not the place or the time for you. Again, change is not always easy, but we owe it to the students and families whom we serve to do our best and to remain squarely focused on students and not on personal agendas. The state of our schools needs to improve, but the state of our town in terms of the will and character of the people is strong. There is much to be said for pioneer pride that defines Southbridge. One need only look to the COPS and Kids program, the state champion Southbridge Little League team, the broad range of medical and wellness initiatives sponsored by Harrington Hospital and its related providers, the generosity of the businesses in town, the stellar public safety services available to residents, programming offered through the YMCA, the town-based chapter of Espira, the Arrow Venture Institute looking to literally take flight from the airport, the fact that the recent that Project Red identified Southbridge for its summer kickoff, that the town recently received a sizable community development block grant, the summer youth program available to residents at Brookside Terrace, and the impressive array of youth reading programs available through our library to reaffirm one's pride. So while we collectively agree that there is work to be done in the schools, let us never lose sight of neither the many good things happening in town nor the educators' hard work simply because negative stories are often more newsworthy. Remember that it is as much as one is judged by how he or she gets up and not by how he or she falls, so too will the community of Southbridge be judged by how it responds to and reverses adversity. I am grateful for having spent the past six years serving the communities of Dover and Sherborn as assistant superintendent and most recently as superintendent. The 16 school committee members spanning three school committees have in many instances become personal friends and those relationships, among other factors, made the decision to vacate my position difficult. The administrative cabinet, the teaching faculty, staff, and parents worked hard with me as a team in advancing several initiatives over the past six years. I could not be more proud of the work we accomplished or be more grateful for my time at Dover Sherborn. I grew as a person and as a practitioner and have left the system stronger than I founded. Our team remains squarely focused on one driving goal and focus, namely on always doing what was best for students. We never wavered in our mission of doing what was best for the students whom we served and our successes are attributable to that conviction. So you might rightfully ask, if things are going so well at Dover Sherborn, why would I leave to pursue other opportunities and what brought me to consider a return to Southbridge? Despite the measurable successes the team at DST accomplished over the past few years, I personally could not deny the burning desire to work with a more diverse student population, be it in a larger suburban or urban community or even in an international setting. That desire culminated in a conversation with the school committee leadership team several months ago, at which time I shared that this would be my last year at Dover Sherborn and that I would look at more diverse settings, including potentially international schools. My search commenced in March, spanned several months, and yielded job offers in China, the Middle East, Vietnam, and most recently an opportunity in Armenia. As you may surely appreciate, accepting any of these positions represents a drastic move and there are many variables at play. Admittedly, when I began to explore international opportunities, I did not necessarily envision relocating halfway around the world. Concurrent with looking at international jobs, I also explored domestic opportunities. Part of that effort resulted in my sharing with the Southbridge School Committee members that I would return to Southbridge schools in whatever way or in whatever capacity was most needed. Many of you know that for the past nine years I've worked closely with a few Southbridge families who have, over the years, become extensions of my own family. Those mentorship relationships remain solidly in place to this day. As a body, you are tasked with determining who best meets your needs in advancing the Southbridge Public Schools. In answering that charge, you have surely had a chance to review my resume, which speaks to core competencies, including an impressive track record of effective program development and implementation using measurable outcomes, demonstrated success in leading a complex, high-performing school system, experience with budget development and oversight, commitment to defining and implementing best organizational practices, background in research-based curriculum development, demonstrated understanding of labor and employment law, extensive background in relationship building, an acute understanding of identifying and providing targeted staff development opportunities, superior oral written and presentation skills, high energy, enthusiasm, and professionalism working with all stakeholders. There is much to be proud of in Southbridge as a community and as a school system. Stakeholders should celebrate all that is good in the town and the good work of the educators in Southbridge while being fully aware of the fact that we have massive capacity for growth and improvement. To the extent that the quality of a town's school system is the single greatest variable considered by people looking to relocate to a town, everyone in Southbridge shares a keen interest in seeing the school system improve. That said, it is fiction to think that the schools will improve without aggressive change and deliberate action, keeping in mind that again, change is not easy. The work before us is difficult and incredibly time-sensitive, but I believe the talent, perseverance, fortitude, civic engagement, community, and pride necessary to improve the schools for the sake of our students reside at the core of the town and its people. I welcome the opportunity to invest the commitment of time, energy, and talent in that effort. Beyond core competencies you would expect in any prospective superintendent, I offer to Southbridge six unique attributes. First, I am completely committed to doing what is in students' best interest always. Second, I offer an unparalleled work ethic and yet would never ask anyone to do something I would not do myself. Third, I have incredible passion for teaching and for the relationship between teachers and students. Fourth, I believe strongly in collaborative problem-solving, open communication among all stakeholders and especially between administrators, school committee members, parents, and town leaders. Fifth, I have roots in Southbridge and understand the community personally and professionally. Sixth, and arguably most importantly, is the fact that I worked tirelessly to get to know all people in the school system from a position of earned respect and appreciation for all that each person does in support of the students and families whom we serve. Thank you for your time, consideration, and support.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Thank you.
Before I open up for the committee, the question was why an interim superintendent? It is nothing against Ms. Stanton or anybody else in our system, but what we've noticed about our system is we have a lot of holes everywhere. Ms. Stanton is actually the curriculum coordinator slash assistant superintendent. We have a vacancy at the business managers' office, we have a vacancy at one of the elementary schools, we have vacancies in some aspects of teachers, we have school choice to deal with. There are so many issues and so many things that have to be handled. We put forth an action plan when we ran for office, and this is what we're going to do. We need to put people in place to do the jobs that they're supposed to be doing and not ask people to move around so fast that by the time they get seated, it's September and we still have vacancies. We have a middle school in dire need of an administrator, which we knew 10 years ago when we studied it for 10 years, and now we have to correct the problem. And thank God for erasers on pencils because we don't want to blame anybody. I don't care what happened in the past. This school committee wants to produce a team concept that pushes the district forward and fills these gaps that we have. We have professional development down at West Street and in various other schools that have to be done before we open school. We want to push school back, we want to do this. There was a lot of discussions going on in our community. I live here, like a lot of you, and when the citizens keep calling and telling you what the problems are in employees, you know, it's almost like I thought after the election that it would be free to communist country. Everybody was relieved that the tension in looking over your shoulder in a revolving door might stop. And I think a first good move is the interim, I'm taking advice from my committee, I didn't do this on my own and a lot of other people. And again, it's nothing against the performance of Ms. Stanton. Ms. Stanton is an excellent curriculum coordinator, and if we go forward with this, which is no guarantee on anything in this world, Ms. Stanton hopefully would stay on as the curriculum coordinator slash system superintendent, but then we need to fill other positions and we need to do them quickly. This taking three years for a superintendent search was just not right, and I think we're going to have to correct the problem as fast as we can, but still be honest and open and transparent. But sitting back in another group of kids going through the Southbridge system and not getting what they're supposed to get because we're trying to get them in, but it doesn't seem to be happening, at least not fast enough for some people in this community. And I think they spoke loud and clear at the last election, it was a mandate that they want change and they want to move forward with our district. Our property values are down, kids are leaving, teachers are leaving, good teachers too. So this is why we need to fill positions and get a team, a curriculum coordinator, a superintendent. And I feel bad for Ms. Stanton, I personally think she's on overload. She works tirelessly, 24/7 to do everything. She's a curriculum coordinator, she's the superintendent, she's whatever it takes to get the job done. That's not her fault. It was a gentleman that came here and started a lot of this, moving the chess pieces around, and nobody's in a position long enough to actually master it. And then we have the state looking down saying, well, we have to do this, we have to do that. We can't keep anybody in place long enough to do it. And the ones that do stay in place are looking over their shoulder on my next. So I think that is the initiative here tonight by the school committee. It's not done by one person. I honestly think that I'm going to open this up to the committee for questions and answers of Mr. Bliss and if you want to go forward on this. Ms. Quinney.
Mr. Loza was listed for an interim superintendent. That position been posted to the chief anywhere?
Doesn't have to be. I talked to Kim Rosak and she said everything was done properly, we do not have to advertise it. We have the ability as a school committee to fill the interim post. Ms. Stanton is an employee at Will and she would revert back to her former position of assistant superintendent of curriculum.
So we're only opening this position up to Mr. Bliss at this time?
No, we're opening it up right now to talk to Mr. Bliss. If we are dissatisfied, then we will go on and search for another superintendent.
So in the sphere of honesty, open, and transparency, how was it that Mr. Bliss was solicited to come to this meeting as you said you've spoken to the committee, given that this committee is seven members? I had no knowledge that Mr. Bliss would be here, that we were looking to fill an interim superintendent position and just received today, which is dated July 19th, which would have been three days ago, could have been sent to me, this letter. So to state that this is a decision of the committee to move this forward and that you've talked to people, I think is more than slightly disingenuous at this time. As I've stated, we're a seven-member board and as of you opening the floor to interview Mr. Bliss is the first knowledge that I had that any of this would take place.
Well, first of all, we did not solicit Mr. Bliss. Mr. Bliss solicited us, and he did it long before I got on the committee, and he is still interested in Southbridge. And when someone solicits, the opportunity is here, it's good to listen. You had three years, the committee had three years to get a superintendent on board and to do things. Now, we're not waiting three years. We have to get the job done and we're going to do it in a manner where we maintain the stability and the honesty of this district. And again, we did not solicit Mr. Bliss. Mr. Bliss has solicited, you know, has sent a letter of interest long before I got on committee, but it sat on a shelf and wasn't taken care of, wasn't looked at. Well, now you know the school committee wants to look at everything. They want to listen to what Mr. Bliss has to say, what he has to offer. You don't, if an opportunity knocks, you have to answer the door, and it's knocking. So I'm answering the door, and as chairman, I've talked to various people and, you know, they seem to less listen to what Mr. Bliss has to say. Can this make us a better district? If it doesn't, just won't happen.
Through you, Mr. Bliss.
Go ahead.
Do you have any experience with turnaround districts?
So not specifically, obviously with Dover Sherborn, not a not an underperforming district, as you logically have done your homework on, but ironically, when I stepped in as assistant superintendent at Dover Sherborn, I was the first ever permanent assistant superintendent in that role. And believe it or not, the district, which is actually three unique school districts, did not have articulated curriculum in place, for instance. I know that's sort of unfathomable, and we often would quip that, you know, we did well sort of despite the fact that we didn't really have a lot of the infrastructure in place. So I really was in charge of making sure that, and we were and are, three distinct school districts, it's Dover Public, Sherborn Public, and Dover Sherborn Regional, three districts, three school committees, and as a result, it really took a lot of brokering to make sure that we were vertically articulating curriculum in a pre-K, if we had two integrated preschool programs, in a pre-K through 12 setting among the three school districts. So there was a lot of work that had to go on in terms of curriculum articulation, much of what is already taking shape here at Southbridge as well, with a lot of the curriculum broad gaps that have been designed.
And what level designation are Dover Sherborn and Dover Sherborn?
We have some Level 2 schools in the district, so therefore each district is treated as an intended district. So one of our districts is a Level 2 and has been, and the other two are Level 1 districts. So we have experience with meeting to put plans in place and corrective action plans in place to address particular areas of underperformance, particularly with students with disabilities and with our ELL population. Some of these issues are transferable, and I like to say transportable, from district to district, even if you're an upper performing or a higher performing district. We struggled with how to meet the needs of our students with special needs, our SWD, high-needs population, as well as our ELL population, largely because the teachers need a lot of professional development around them, developing the tool belt to be able to deliver the differentiated instruction that was required in the school.
Given you've brought up students with disabilities and ELL students, what percentage of those districts were represented by those populations?
Sure. So in Southbridge, we're just shy of north, about 20% specialized, and we were actually just shy of 15% special education in the districts in Dover and Sherborn as well, and our ELL population was only about 4%, 5% in Dover Sherborn and here floating at about 17% in Southbridge currently. But I think all districts are challenged with implementing the WEDA standards, and we were struggling with that. A lot of teachers, sometimes in a district where you actually have fewer ELL students, sometimes some of the teachers we would meet with would have a little resistance, like, well, I may not even have any ELL students, so why, you know, it's not really my issue. So we would experience a lot of, dare I say, kind of institutional resistance sometimes to really having teachers embrace the idea that they could have Ls, ELLs, students in their classrooms. And so we struggled with a lot of the SEI endorsement issues, but many districts, in fact, like Southbridge, because you have a higher population, the SEI availability of the course is much greater to your educators than to mine's.
Have you written or implemented an AIP?
Not an AIP, but we actually, and I've done a lot of homework on the AIP as authored in multiple iterations here for Southbridge. We actually went through, obviously, as every district does, six coordinate, we go through every six years our coordinated program, so we've had caps and all those kinds of things that we've had to implement. But one of the things, Ms. Quinney, that we were most proud of is the fact that we actually, although set up as three districts, we defined goals and put them into what we affectionately called buckets. And there's an educators bucket, and that bucket revolved totally around the educator evaluation system, which our educator evaluation system was completely organic. We did not adopt the state model system, we developed an educator evaluation system that was of our own making, which, as long as it complied, the district was available, could do that, right? So we had an educator bucket, we had a student bucket. The student bucket revolved completely around alignment of curriculum around common core state standards, not unlike why other districts include Southbridge. And then we had a so, we had a student wellness bucket that we called, and that really revolved around the social and emotional wellness of our kids, and that is something that was based on a lot of our adolescent youth risk survey data, which I had the privilege of reviewing today at the Southbridge as well. So many of the same exercises we go through, it's just with a different lens. So we're, for instance, our social-emotional goal that we developed for our school system was around stress and anxiety, because we had 14 students hospitalized over the past year with suicidal ideations and a lot of social-emotional issues. So we, as a school system with three school committees, said, let's embrace this as one of our goals. So to your point, what we actually did is the administrative cabinet, in concert with three school committees, 16 members, and the teachers, is what are the three most important things that we're going to accomplish this year? And we had literally action items and timelines attached to each of those buckets for the goals. And each of those buckets kept it very simple, kept it hyper-focused. And then what spun from that is that the educators' goals tied to their educator evaluation system were all connected to that. So for the first time ever in the history of the school system, there was literally a thread, a synthesis between school committee goals, system-wide goals, administrative goals, educator evaluation goals. And that was really sort of one of my questions for tonight, I mean, the AIP, and then I obviously reviewed the broadcast from last week and Brooke Clenchey's letter to the school committee through the acting superintendent, and I reviewed that and had the opportunity to review the AIP. I think the next step with that would be to make sure that there's actually, you know, it sounds that there's really some pretty good organic buy-in from the instructional leaders in the school system, but let's take it a step further and let's make sure that all the educators in Southbridge have their goals, professional practice goals, student learning goals for this year, are in fact connected to very discreet, very discreet to that AIP. Otherwise, that has the likelihood of becoming sort of a dust collector, right? Because it's educators spin-off and develop goals. So the notion of having not authored an AIP, and the AIP for Southbridge has been through multiple iterations since its original authoring, I think in 2013 or so, stemming from the 2000, I think the same year, report from DESI. So a lot of this is, I think, what's, there's a lot of groundwork that's been done and it's great, but to be able to thread it all together so that the goals are all revolving around particularly defined objectives.
I think one of the challenges that we have faced is not necessarily in writing goals that tie into the needs of the district, but it is then communicating that to the state in a manner in which that it gets approved. So the level of oversight that we see in this district is significantly greater than another district in writing goals and having that threaded through. In that same vein, have you utilized other resources outside of the school district, such as a DESI monitoring system or DSEC or any of those other resources that we currently have in place?
Sure. We had to utilize a lot of, and I will, just to step back, I appreciate the fact, I just want to speak to the AIP for a moment. You know what I found most intriguing about the AIP, and I have to give credit to those who were part of its re-authoring, was it was markedly honest in saying that, you know, that we write this, we're just not sure that things are implemented with fidelity. It takes a lot, you know, to say that and to be honest about that and saying, you know, there's work we have to do around that. And Brooke Clenchey worked in Ashland, I worked closely with Brooke before she went to DESI, and she would be a great partner. So a lot of the individuals, Claire Abbott and the evaluation system were Clenchey, these are all individuals that I've worked very closely with at DESI, including the fact that the Department of Education asked us to showcase our evaluation system to the state as an exemplar. So in terms of our affiliation, for lack of a better term, with the educator evaluation component, a major connection there. What we also lacked was a lot of the professional development outlets, so we've done a lot of outreach through RBT, through Research Better Teaching, for Skilful Leader, Skilful Teacher, Teachers 21, the work of John Dioria. We've engaged a lot of external resources in order to fortify a lot of the professional development campaign at Dover Sherborn, so certainly I'm one who recognizes, recognize always when you have internal talent, right? And you have internal capacity to be able to affect change, but also know when, you know, we need to look to DSEC, for instance, which is a resource that probably could be more broadly utilized, and why not enlist those services? They are available to us as a level four.
Building off of what you just said regarding those external resources, there are plenty of excellent external resources that the town of Southbridge clearly cannot financially engage with. Given that knowledge, how would you then, given a challenge with professional development, reach out in order to get the professional development that you may see as needed at a cost that would be within Southbridge's grasp?
Sure. One of the things that, Ms. Quinney, that really is, would be new for me and would be a very, very inviting challenge, would be the notion that Southbridge is a community, is a school system that actually can apply for a number of grant opportunities. Not to suggest that grants haven't been explored, but as you might imagine at Dover Sherborn, every time we would sit down to try to author a grant for whatever, whether student wellness or whatever it happened to be, we would be summarily rejected at, you know, less than 2% low income in the entire school system, obviously. So that would become a, that would actually be something that I would welcome, is the opportunity to be able to explore some of the grant opportunities. And again, not to suggest that anyone hasn't done due diligence around that here, but the other thing that was really interesting, and I just know from my experience in Southbridge, there's a lot of internal talent. And I'll share with you one variable of the educator evaluation system that we developed, which was what we called a QPO, a Qualified Peer Observer component. What we recognized was that oftentimes we didn't have to go out and spend $2,000 a day for a consultant to come in to work with us on a particular area. One, because sometimes we didn't have the resources to do that, or because we could have thought we were going to get the money from a grant. We developed through the Eddie Vowell system, we did sponsor a course available for any Dover Sherborn educator to take, who wanted to, through credentialing, through his or her building principal, had to sign up and express interest in becoming a qualified peer observer. And essentially that meant that you go through a professional-driven course, and if you make it through that course so that everyone had the consistent training, that you could become a peer observer to somebody, it could be within the building, it could be across the building, it could be in a completely different discipline than you, and work with an educator in Dover Sherborn. So what that did is it really identified the 24 teachers, we had 204.1 FTEs, we have about 165. about 165.4 or something, I think in Southbridge, something in that ballpark for FTEs. But of the 204, we were able to identify 24 teachers that became this internal, a go-to team. So as educators struggled, maybe it was with around differentiation, maybe it was around lesson development, maybe it was around technology integration, it could be around anything, you were able to pinpoint and work with an individual. I do believe in my heart that in Southbridge, we have talented educators who have been here for a while, or maybe not, have not been here for so long, who could be duly trained and could become a resource for their colleagues. We actually found that was one of the best things. We didn't need to go out and spend 20 and $30,000 on a trainer. That sometimes teachers would kind of sit back and say, "Is this just a one-and-done kind of thing? I'm going to sit here today and then I'm not going to get anything that's really going to..." You know, it's sometimes more effective for them, for teachers, to be able to work with a colleague who could just as easily have that composition of kids in his or her class and some of the challenges, as opposed to some kind of external resource. Just something I'd love to poke around a bit around.
And you've talked a lot about the educator evaluation in Dover Sherborn. As I'm sure you know that that's a negotiated tool. So clearly ours is not the same as Dover Sherborn, and our DDMs have to be negotiated and continue to move forward. How do you foresee the overseeing the educator evaluation tool and negotiating it so that if those threads aren't in place that align with the AIP, that that would happen as well as the district-determined measures?
No, it's a great point. And as you know, from the state level, through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, the notion of the law, of codifying law around educator evaluation, nobody's sort of, the MTA and no greater bodies sort of threw the flag on the field over that and said, "Oh, we're objecting to that," because on the face of it, no one was going to reject to the notion or reject the notion that we want to do, we want to put better qualified, better, you know, better resource in front of our kids. It was no surprise, and it is no surprise to me, and I'm sure to many, many others who are brighter than I, who, that the DDM issue is the big sticking point in the educator evaluation system. So essentially, at the end of the year, having to arrive at a student learning impact rating for every educator based on empirical data that's supposed to connect back to what's called, it's now called a district measure, or what used to be called a DDM, district determined, tie back to a particular assessment, that's become the sticking point. One of the things I really like to do is to put together an evaluation subcommittee, again, not to suggest that one does not exist, but four years ago, we put together a committee and it was comprised of school committee member from each of our preschool committees, the building leaders, the teachers, the teacher union reps from each building, and we literally sat monthly and we hashed out issues that were coming down the pipe with respect to the evaluation system. Most recently, it's been around DDMs and navigating that whole course of action. I firmly believe that the way to navigate a lot of this is through a respectful exchange with parties that are brought together. So we have met for four years, for every month for four years, we met, and it was an opportunity for everyone. It could be a school committee member, it could be from the, from the union side, "Hey, this is what's coming out, teachers are frustrated about," or school committees wondering about why all these, why these exemplary ratings? And one of the things we worked really hard on doing, and I'd love to see this happen here, we disavowed, even at Dover Sherborn, we disavowed the educators of the notion that everyone's exemplary, right? In the old evaluation system, everyone was distinguished. And easy to do when you're a high-performing district and everyone sort of thinks that he or she is not performing. We came up with a mantra that was that the exemplary category, exemplary is a place you visit, you don't live. So an educator might have a year, might have a particular something that goes on in a given year, but he or she is in fact duly qualified as an exemplary educator. But, you know, 96.5% of Southbridge educators in the last data release were classified as proficient, about 0.5 exemplary, 2.1% needs improvement, and 2.6% unsatisfied, I think are how the percentages shaped down for Southbridge. So you have a, like, not, not unlike most districts, you have this huge group of educators who are labeled as proficient, and I think we need to begin to kind of pull that apart, a little tease that out, figure out, you know, we could, it's, what does that mean? And what's happening for supports for people with is proficient, if the teachers are proficient, why are those proficient ratings not rippling through with other, with student learning outcomes? Good question. Something that we certainly need to dig down. Thank you. Anybody else?
I do.
Just believe in us.
I will say as well that I did not know that we'd be interviewing Mr. Bliss this evening. And I thought that we'd be talking about the interim superintendent position and that we'd be discussing what we expected. So I do have a few questions, and I apologize that there, that I wasn't as prepared as I'd like to be, as I found out about an hour and a half ago that we'd be interviewing. So my first question would be, what would be your first three things that you see as targets if hired as interim superintendent?
In terms of the timing and the readiness to open school?
Yes.
It would be very, I would really love to be able to forge a solid working relationship with Ms. Stanton and to be able to fortify the ILT model here, right, of the administrative cabinet, instructional leadership team. We have a very pressing vacancy at West Street School. That's a huge issue in my mind. It's actually had me up at night for the, you know, just reading about it, thinking, wow, you know, school opens in five weeks. And so staffing and making sure that the staffing model is as robust and as challenged as we can get it to be for the opening of the school clearly is an issue. There is some fluidity, I understand, within the business office that has to be addressed. You know, in watching some of the recordings, there's a good deal of dissection of the operating budget for fiscal year 16, coming in at whatever, $25.5 million, whatever the number is, does clearly a lot of work. I have an extremely strong finance background, and that's something that I would bring to the position. I'm curious to know, as an extension of that, Mr. Olivo, where we stand with the end-of-year report, which is a biggie, that's probably not done, is something that we would need to figure out, obviously. And also, the AIP becomes a driving issue, and I really want to make sure with the instructional leadership team, we're poised, prepared, and privileged to be able to tie educator goals to the AIP and to make sure that we're very clear in opening school, how are we effectively communicating, how we communicate the goals? And another thing, which I know may seem sort of a little tongue-in-cheek, I think there's a lot of culture building that has to be done. I think there's opportunity to recognize educators for good and dedicated work to the school system, and I think there's some building of morale that needs to have throughout the system. That's somewhat anecdotal, I offer, but that, and I know that may not be one of the, sort of the biggie big, but it is, because it's important to communicate to the people that deliver in the classroom every day, their value, their respect, and their listen to.
Right. Now, there was clearly an issue last year, as the former superintendent said that we'd have unity across the elementary schools. Now, we have two elementary schools. One, obviously, Charlton Street, performed a lot better than what West Street did. Now, we were told that there would be unity in the both schools, that we'd have what you have at Charlton, we'd have at West Street, and that clearly wasn't the case this past year. What are your ideas in being able to work with the administration to assure that we do have that continuity between both schools so that we are the same across the board? So that if one school's learning one thing, the other school's learning it as well?
So I think, you know, the ELA and math roadmaps that have been authored, which are readily available and whatnot, it becomes, you know, one of those concerns is it's great to have something done and to be able to check out that something's done, it's another thing to be able to effectuate it in the classroom. I will share with you that I sense that something that needs to happen here potentially is exactly what happened in Dover Sherborn, believe it or not. Two elementary schools, one in Sherborn, one in Dover, both K through five, kids from Dover go to this school, kids from Sherborn go to this school, and never shall, there's no choice mechanism. So, and it really, you want to talk about some inherent competition between, because you have, you know, one school committee that was saying, you know, why the SGP and such and such and whatnot. Most amazingly, and it sounds very simple, we really had never connected those schools in terms of talking about teaching, talking about, for instance, our literacy program at both elementary schools, and talking about our balanced literacy campaign, and what does that look like at our elementary school in Dover, and what does that look like in Sherborn? What does everyday math look like in Dover? Is there a difference in resource provision? Is there a difference in professional development provision? Amazingly, the two faculties had never really been brought together to talk about teaching and learning. When I stepped in as assistant superintendent, those buildings were never divorced again. Though their PD plans, every other Wednesday for the early release, they could now not imagine those two faculties not coming together to talk about what it looked... So we sent faculty members over to the different buildings, we had people from the middle school, we actually had sixth-grade teachers who had no idea, not because they're not good people, they're dedicated, they had no idea what literacy instruction looked like at the elementary level. So it was like, there you are, a sixth-grade ELA teacher, and it was like no conception really of what it looked like. So we sent middle school teachers to the elementary schools and did a lot of observations so that they would have a semblance of what that looked like. So I think bringing the, bringing a strong professional development plan together, most targeted for ELA and math, that's going to bring the faculties of the two buildings together to talk about best practice, that's a starting point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I said unity, I meant uniformity.
No, it's...
I apologize, but you did answer the question, I think. Now, I have one question. How, describe to me the perfect interim superintendent or superintendent?
Interim superintendent or superintendent?
Well, interim, I mean, we're talking interim, I just...
Sure. So first and foremost, it's very important not, not to think, so if I were named, not to think first and foremost that good work hasn't happened, not to discount good work and good effort by good people. People don't come into this field because they don't want to do well by kids. You know, it's just sometimes people need the recipe to be tweaked. So I would commend and approach it from the angle of building trust and respect, not feeling as if, you know, baby's thrown out with the bathwater, because there are some good things that have been done, and that's a credit to a lot of good people in the schools. But there really does need to be swift and deliberate action around making sure that we're not putting together an AIP, and this, I believe Ms. Stanton would probably agree, and then others would too, you come up with some document you really feel strongly about, and then you fear that, might this thing not gain momentum, might it not gain traction, might it just become a sort of a collector? It would be vital. That has been approved, that document has been approved, there might be some tweaking that needs to be done with respect to the benchmarks. I doubt it at this point, because it sounds like Brooke Clenchey has signed off on it, but we would need to work as a team to make sure that we try to keep everyone focused this year on a few very strategic goals. It's so easy for initiative fatigue to set in. Teachers will be like, "I don't know if I'm supposed to be working on a literacy program or math standards, or student social emotional wellness, or I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing." And the other is that I get to know every single person in the school system, it's just how I operate, I employ 348 people. Dover Sherborn, I know every single teacher, every single grade level, I know the families, I know, I know the custodians and the food service workers. That means a lot to have that personal connection with the people that support the whole campaign. It's not just teachers, educators as defined, everyone employed, needs to buy in, and we need to work really strategically to make that personal connection.
Last question that I have for you, Mr. Bliss. This position is for interim superintendent with the intent to open up a superintendent search. Should you be selected as the interim superintendent, would you be submitting your name for the superintendent search?
Most likely.
So, Mr....
Thank you, Mr. Olivo.
Olivo.
Jack? Questions?
Yeah. Mr. Bliss, welcome back to Southbridge.
Thank you, Joe, and welcome back to committee.
And honestly, I'm at a disadvantage because, you know, just being appointed Monday night, I don't have the institutional knowledge over the last three years, other than being an outside observer. So I, for one, was disappointed when you left the district several years ago, but you did get some valuable experience along the way. I come at this with my concerns being the budgetary issues. Looking at the budget, the first thing being said the other night was that the district does not have an approved final budget going into the fiscal year. What would be, and we have a business manager that is leaving first week in August around that, has offered to assist. Budget is the biggest issue that you can imagine. We don't have positions filled, a lot of positions open. We also are looking at, well, the school committee may be looking at the middle school as a principal, which I feel strongly about, having served on the building committee previously, model was to have that. What would be your first steps if you were to take this position to address the budgetary issues? And you did mention the end-of-year report, which is critical in state funding. What would be your first steps to address that, along with all the other issues with open positions to get the buildings ready for August 26th and 27th?
The middle school, high school leadership issue is of paramount concern. It is, and again, somewhat anecdotally and somewhat less anecdotally, but there is a concern, and I would certainly want to listen closely and chat closely with Ms. Stanton and with Ms. Earls, to better determine what exactly, I'm aware of the proposed reorganization and whatnot, but there is definitely a need for some increased leadership at the middle school. I'm not sure exactly what the position would be titled necessarily, but I do know that for one person to have ownership of that entire building is perhaps an undoable job, you know, and there's some fortification that is needed. Is it another principal? Is it some reconfiguring? I'm very creative in identifying, first of all, people's talents, and then secondarily in identifying how to get it done within constraints of a budget. So the good news is that we have a bottom-line budget, that's good. Now, the dissection has to be, again, I will offer you, Mr. Joe, and that at Dover Sherborn, I was responsible for developing three independent school budgets totaling just south of $41 million across two, three different real finance committees, three school committees, et cetera. The budget is something that I really take on and own, because I believe that's the, it's the bucket from which you kind of, you know, you effectuate plans to get things done. So I think, as I've watched a lot of the broadcasts and certainly as I've heard things, there's a lot of relationship rebuilding that needs to happen between the school committee and the town council here, I believe. I think we've sort of set, reset the clock a little bit to where we were several years ago, and we need to fix that. I assure you, that would be fixed. I, in fact, one of the people who offered, it's my recommendation letters, the head of the finance committee in the town of Sherborn, extremely conscientious, member of FinCon, and transparency, I don't use the term, just sort of tongue-in-cheek. Literally, we developed a document, and this is what I'd like to do in the next budget round moving forward, what we call the budget talking points item, which is every single line of the budget. So you had your overview and your pie chart, we broke out where expenditures and what was up and what was down and why. We developed what's called the budget talking points, and I personally authored it, and it explained every single line of the budget that was up or down by, you know, 3% to 4%. So that as FinCon members, as school committee members were prepping for meetings, you, there was clearly a rationale, why is the paraprofessionals lineup by 8%? Well, it's because we have a return of X number of students coming back from private school placements who are coming back with distinct special needs, maybe they're language-based learning deficits, and therefore, we're going to go out, we're going to look for two, you know, paraprofessionals with specialty in that particular area. Boom. We made it through the entire budget process for three school districts, we were done March, done, done, done. Not a single question at town meeting. That only happens as a result of building a very strong relationship with your, with your town leaders and having complete transparency. We're a little bit behind the eight ball, you know, given that school opens in five weeks. So I would literally see long hours of my time being invested over the next few days, weeks, in really mining that budget and working with Aaron, I believe, is the sitting business manager, and with Ms. Stanton to figure out what were some of the... and with Ms. Stanton to figure out what were some of the pressure points for the budget? Because clearly, although we're opening school, clearly there needs to be a working understanding of that budget from our point of view, and as one of the three prongs of the school committee's responsibility. Yeah, I mean, even though we're a little bit behind the eight ball on it, it's, it's critical that the members of the school committee be brought up to speed on that operating budget for fiscal '16, into whatever level you want fluency around it because it is one of your huge charges. So I would offer you my talent, my expertise, my strength in finance to make sure that that dissection would begin, and honest.
Can you identify some of your thoughts? You, you've been a sitting assistant superintendent and superintendent for a number of years. Explain to the committee what you believe the ideal relationship should be between a school committee and superintendent of schools.
That's a great question. It, it was interesting, I can use my experience clearly from Dover Sherborn. Open, honest, supporting of one another. I, I made it my job to make, and the team's job from, so I had administrative cabinet of 22 administrators system-wide, and then there was a central office cabinet. And in the central office, it was only the assistant superintendent, the business manager, and the director of special ed, end of story. That was for a school system with three school districts and 2123 kids. So that was it. I mean, that was our, our team, the central office. And we met every single Monday morning for a quick cabinet meeting, and we did a brain drain. You know, Ms. Quinney, what's going on this week in special ed? You know, what, you know, what do you have going on today? It's just so that I knew what was going on in special ed business. So we all knew who was on first, and then anything that needed to be relayed to the school committee or that they might want to have information around, we created a secure Google Drive around. And what we did is we set up a number of folders, so if there were items pertaining to budget or policy or whatever, we had to direct deposit into these, into the Google Drive that each of the three school committee chairs had editorial rights over, so it could go in and we all could, you know, have, have some stake in what was there. And I really was very proud of the fact that my team did a great job of keeping school committee members informed. It was, there was never something walked into a meeting. Packets were prepared, posted, made available about five to six days prior to a meeting. We had agenda-setting meetings where we discussed the order and how things would go and that kind of thing with, with the school committee chairs, just to keep it smooth and efficient. I then would meet with all the instructional leaders before the meeting so we knew like literally who was on, so okay, we're going over MCAS results. Great, building principal, you got that? Yep, and all those items that would be included in the school committee packets. So that relationship had to be respectful of boundaries, keeping in mind that the school committee has a very sacred charge of appointing a superintendent, dismissing a superintendent, whatever the case may be, of the superintendent, and, and a budget and a policy. So I understood very clearly that those were the driving prongs of the school committee. My team's function was to support that. How can we support? We would bring information about policy from the field, from the schools, from whomever. I would bring updates from MASS, MASC, from you name it, whatever. And I would attend all of the subcommittee meetings, and we had great fun. I mean, that was the thing of it. It was, it was really a lot of fun to get together because there wasn't any of this kind of who owns what. It was very collaborative, open, and honest. And I really consider the school committee members really pretty close friends in Dover Sherborn.
The other thing I, I think I would have a concern on is the fact that obviously we've been a level plus district for too long a period of time. The current interim superintendent and assistant superintendent have developed this AIP plan which has been approved, and the letter was pretty long, I think, from DESE. What would you see as your first, if you were selected or if this was to be a change? My concern would be that DESE would look at Southbridge yet again as a system that doesn't know what they're doing, that, you know, just changes things at a whim. What would be your first steps to deal with DESE to let them know that we have a, you know, the school committee and superintendent's office is working collaboratively to implement this plan? Because it really is an interim position right now. You said that you may, or plan would put it to place for future. But DESE would look at us as, you know, a system in flux again with school opening up. What would be your first steps with DESE to assure them that we have solid plan in place of what we need to do?
So I think it would be incredibly vital to make sure, and to very quickly, to meet with the instructional leadership team, in particular with Ms. Stanton, to understand better the authoring of the documents, some of the pitfalls, some of the issues. Clearly, there was a great deal of conversation, as rightfully it should occur, between, I'm sure, Ms. Stanton's office and the DESE as that document was, was being developed. That would be very important for, for us as a team, to be very much on the same page and to engage the DESE immediately, whether it's an in-person meeting or if it's a Skype conversation or just a conference call, with the key stakeholders from DESE, many of them I know very well, including, you know, Burke Clancy, who's a good friend, to be able to just communicate that the team is, is tight, we're cohesive, we're ready to move on this plan, and that quite honestly, it's, it's an effort to really expand the talent of the instructional leader, of the leadership team for this district. It's not, it's, and I would want to be very clear in saying, this is not yet another kind of turbulent swing in, in the administration. This is actually, as Mr. Lozis said at the beginning, to make sure that the central office is fortified with people, with talent, to be able to actually get that done. Not just say we have an AIP, isn't that great, not to suggest that that's what would happen, but to actually be able to have enough feet on the ground, boots on the ground, to be able to get it done, and to really articulate the fact that we would see educators' goals in the evaluation systems having to be intrinsically entwined with that, with the AIP. And over that, Mr. Joe, and we have complete latitude, the administrators. The setting of goals and the discussion around educators' goals and the importance of those goals and what goals ultimately look like and how people are measured against them. That is really a lot of license for that resides with the administrators. There's a lot of, there's a lot of strength in the educator evaluation system and in the law, actually, from educator evaluation. And it would be vital for us to make sure that people's goals are connected to the AIP. You're not going to connect every single item, but there are three benchmarks in that AIP. You really have to connect all three. I don't see how you can't. One's about curriculum instruction, one's about data, and one's about community involvement. Those are the three prongs of your AIP as approved. So it only makes sense, and I actually think Southbridge educators would welcome that, kind of having a very clear roadmap of what goal-setting should look like. Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Anything else, Mr. Joe?
Not at this time, I may revisit a question.
Dr. Page, any questions? I'm just going to go right away.
So I guess getting back to what Mr. Libio touched on a little while ago, in terms of the sort of desegregation between an interim superintendent and a superintendent. One of the things that I've been cautious of, or I guess just wary of, is you're putting somebody in an interim job, you're basically wanting them to run things until you get somebody in place permanently. So could you just give us a little bit of your thoughts in terms of the kinds of things you would do as an interim? You talked a lot about sort of long-ranging vision and stuff like that earlier, but concisely, in the interim role, what would you see?
Sure. So, so Dr. Page, my, my style is really, I think sometimes when the school districts are contemplating and a number of districts are out, you know, sort of looking for interims and whatnot at this point for whatever reasons, I'm not one to just sort of keep the, keep the seat warm. I mean, it's not my, it's not my style. So I think it's, it would be vital to make sure, again, that stability within our teaching faculty, stability within the administrative cabinet of the school district. We need to very quickly find a way to make sure that we are attracting and retaining people who are high quality, and we need to stop the revolving door of both administrators and, of administrators from central office right through buildings. That is vital and I think immediate work for the interim superintendent. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Bliss. I know touching upon what they said, this is an interim role. I know you mentioned that you were looking for job opportunities in other areas. What would your commitment to the district be for the interim role while we do the superintendent search? Would you be planning on staying until that superintendent is named? What, what's your thoughts on that?
That's a great question, and I would, I would stay as long as my services were needed in Southbridge. I would not assume a position and then something else materializes in March or something equal of next year. That is not, that would not be in my game plan at all. That would be an incredible disservice to the school system, and that's, that would not be my, my style at all. So, you know, it, it is interesting because it's a move from, you know, a high-performing district in that role, and there is a love and a passion in Southbridge. And I think it's evidenced by the relationships that I've kept in place for, for almost a decade now since I was at Wells. And I, and I also, just to, to your point, I also wouldn't be looking at all kinds of other interim opportunities either. This is something very unique.
My second question would be, what do you see as your biggest challenge coming in day one as that interim superintendent role?
The success of the superintendent interim permanent, really his or her success is dependent on the strength of the relationship with the school committee and the strength of that leadership, the administrative leadership team. And I would see it as an immediate challenge, one that I welcome, but to be able to work in really building the aisle, rebuilding, or building the administrative cabinet, as I called it in Dover Sherborn. It was interesting, we actually had someone come in a few months ago and worked with us as a cabinet on what would work better. You know, what works better for meeting function and agenda setting and all that. So kind of like, you know, sometimes like Glenn Koocher, somebody from MASC will come in and work on the school committee or be able to recruit or whatever. We had someone come in and actually work with the administrative cabinet because we were trying to find a way, we have such precious amount of time, finite time together. And what we felt is that our agendas were being driven by housekeeping type stuff and marketing. So we took on a book study together. You know, we all started reading a book and spending some of our time at each meeting just talking about debriefing some of the chapters of books. So I think building that team because the success, I'm not the one person who thinks it's a team. You know, it's a cabinet. And as I often say to students, I run a, I do a little cable TV show Dover Sherborn, a little roundtable where students can come on every week and chat. They can talk about anything they want to, it can be a little dangerous. And so they can come on and talk about anything they want to, and, and I, and I say to the students, if not for you, we have no reason to be here. If not for the 2123 kids, so the purpose of the show is to give them a voice in their school. I've already been to high school, you know, I mean, I've been there, done that. So this is an opportunity for them to have a voice. And that connection, I will, I will share, Ms. Carnan, the connection with students is vital for me. So when you talk about one of the challenges for superintendent is to find a way to stay connected with families and kids. That is something that was very important to me in Dover Sherborn, it's vital to me when I was at Wells, and it would be very important for me to do again here, even in that role. And as I've said to students before, just because my title's superintendent, that doesn't make me any more important. It makes my job different, makes my function different, but that's all that does. We all have a job to play on the team.
Thank you. My next question would be, in the district, we have a lot of students with social, emotional, and behavior issues that I find from parents, from teachers, are, play a big role. And even at the middle, high school level, our suspension rates, that's come into play. Suspending too many students, we've had other issues regarding that. How would you try to handle those situations?
The, not unlike when I, when I started at Southbridge, and we developed a very solid team at the school at the time. And it wasn't, it wasn't just myself and the behavior, the behaviorist or the assistant principal at the time. It was a whole group of us. I mean, it was some, some teachers who took it upon themselves to come down in the morning and help out. We greeted every, when I was at Wells, we greeted every student at the door with a good morning, you ready for school, you ready to learn, you ready? I knew every single student in that building, every family in that building. And that connection and being able to still bump into students who said, oh, Mr. Bliss, that building was locked. I mean, it was unchecked, I mean, it was, you know, kids knew that it was respect-based. And it wasn't just something that we sort of tossed around the word respect. It was literally students knew, came to expect and be able to predict that they'd be greeted every day coming to school, that there were people in the building who cared about them, that they were there for them, and where students had a voice. And we curtailed a lot of behavior. I was, I was at Wells when Mr. Bishop was at the high school, and it was a good sort of connection because then Mr. Bishop knew when the freshmen came to the high school and the freshman academy at the time, there was an interesting, you know, connection. But I know it may sound, you know, sort of tongue in cheek to say that it's all about creating a culture of respect, and it's respect for everyone. Respect for students, respect for teachers, and holding fair, I'm consistent, and I'm firm. And it's, it's the same standard to which I hold myself, I hold teachers to that standard. And, you know, in terms of, you know, teachers being prepared, being on time to school, curtailing staff absenteeism, that is, I monitor all that. I include items around that in educator evaluations and make sure that I speak to the fact of whether people are, you know, are you on time for school? Are you prepared to, to be there to deliver instruction? It's all about that relationship, and we can only expect from students what, you know, what we're putting into the, the other end of the transaction. But that, that I think is, is really vital to that. And the other, the other piece, Ms. Carnan, is that, you know, when I was at Wells, I implemented a Saturday school program that was an alternative to suspension. Because the bottom line was that, and I ran the program myself, and when stu, when there was an infraction that resulted in out-of-school suspension, the conversation would go along the lines of this with the family, that please come in, I'd like to talk to you about what you're inspired, you have a face-to-face conversation. You know, it's probably not the best solution for the school or for your child to have your child out of school for a period of time. So as an alternative to that, we're going to have a Saturday program where work would be sent down and students would come to the school building and have, and serve that suspension on Saturday. Parents agreed to it, it was a huge success. And it really, we watched a sharp decline in suspensions when kids realized they weren't going to be on vacation for a few days.
Thank you, that concludes my question.
Mr. Bishop?
I, I just, some tremendous questions, and I, I did have the privilege of working with Mr. Bliss for a couple of months, three years, I guess it was. I'm going to take, we all received an email from a parent today or yesterday, I'm not sure, regarding the issue of student, of school uniforms, based on what Mrs. Carnan said. I just like, you know, I noticed research, I did the research. I mean, I took heed when I decided we weren't going to wear hooded garments in the building. Okay, but we were trying to change the culture of the building. What are your thoughts on the district going to a school uniform?
I think on any, I think on a topic like that, or even on a Saturday suspension kind of program, I think what's really important is not to underestimate the need to involve the parent community in that and to understand, what I often find with parents is that when you sit down or you provide a communique, whether it's through your website or pamphlet or you do a parent information session, explaining the position and the rationale for things sometimes goes a long way. And I think oftentimes, on the receiving end, of parents feeling is that this is sort of being forced back and maybe not fully understanding, you know, they don't live and breathe in schools every day, right? So they have their kids at home, and maybe the kids at home want, ah, I never want to wear a uniform. But understanding and providing an opportunity for people, for parents to synthesize that in fact, this takes a lot of the stigma off of having branded names and labels and expense and whatnot. And also being able to provide a vehicle for families who really are financially strapped and people that may be thinking, I can, I can't afford clothes for school. I mean, how am I ever going to afford uniforms? Sometimes it can have that stigma of being a private school kind of thing. So I think more than anything, the parent communication and building information around that can help build support for what could be perceived as a, a pretty remarkable, you know, sea change in terms of a position on that, if we were moving in the direction of implementing. in terms of a position on that, if we were moving in the direction of implementing uniforms. I will tell you from families around, there's a lot of chatter about that.
Well, you know, I was, one parent did reach out and ask the question, and I just wanted to bring that out and see what you stood on that. If we could move away from that, during the budget sessions, I was made aware, as everyone was, I believe, we have 95 teachers in the district who are non-PTS, non-professional status, beginning in the first, second, or third year of teaching. Would we continue to use RBT for training our teachers? I mean, we've invested, I know the district had invested an awful lot of time, money, and effort into that. Or is this a better approach that you would suggest?
So, I think a combination of things. So, for instance, RBT, so RBT Research for Better Teaching is a, like a lot of PD or agencies, has undergone a lot of change recently. And Dr. Sandra Spooner, who's the executive director of RBT, is a friend of mine. And I know that institutionally, RBT as an agency is going through a lot of change right now. So, while we used RBT for a skillful teacher course that we recently ran, we had a tremendous instructor. Once upon a time, we had a less-than-stellar instructor, right? As you well know. So, there's an ebb and a flow. So, we've had great luck this past year with Teachers 21 and John Dorian, he was very helpful in a lot of our, we've used Bill Rebus for some of our evaluation items, and we certainly have used RBT. But I would really like to work on building a teacher forum with talented educators and helping those few people to be released even from some teaching potentially, to be able to go. And like, when you were running the high school, I'm sure there were instances when you would have a math teacher that you'd love to be able to peer coach, you know, a struggling math teacher. So, a lot of it can be organic, it doesn't have to be big-ticket kind of brand name-type PD. But I think what's really important is to have the PD thread for the year deliberately connected to the goals, that are connected to the educator goals, that are connected to the AIP. Because the minute there's a departure from that, you lose a little bit of traction, I think, with the AIP.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by any other members, other questions? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, there's been a lot of talk about stability and the need for stability and having stability in the district. You discussed that a little bit, Mr. Bliss. It's also been stated by members of the committee that in three months, we will have a new superintendent in place. So, that brings us to approximately September 22nd, one month through the school year. How would you feel about being what the committee has referred to as a placeholder or a gap filler for that period of time until someone took that seat permanently?
So, I think it would be important for me to better understand the search process, which I think is maybe the next item on the agenda, maybe. In terms of understanding, if the search process is aggressive and there's reason for it to be, to have a September launch with a whatever naming, it is, I don't think it's unreasonable to think that someone that's identified to be the superintendent probably wouldn't have a start date, I would think, potentially until July 1 of 2016, possibly. So, I mean, that's possible, but someone could start sooner than that, I suppose. So, I would be interested to know sort of a little more, have a little more clarity on the timeline for the search process. That would be helpful, not to bounce your question, but...
I think that is a perfectly reasonable answer. I, this, the previous school committee had voted to put Ms. Stanton in her acting role through July 1st or June 30th of 2016, and then undertake a thoughtful, transparent, open process. And that had been the plan that we were moving forward with, so we would have stability. The person that had written the AIP to continue with that work, teachers, administrators would know what to expect and had a knowledge of Ms. Stanton and the expectations, as well as the expectations of the AIP. That's why I'm just more than slightly taken aback with all the discussion regarding stability and interviewing an interim person who would potentially be in place for three months and upset the apple cart. We had said, Mr. Kootcher had said that July 1st is a typical start date for any superintendent. And it's been bounced around a lot that interim or the acting superintendent would be that person until a permanent person was hired and would start immediately had been the thought that has been going around.
And just to that point, I think it's an interesting, I think that stability for the, you make an interesting point. I think that stability for the district extends most nuclearly to our conversation, obviously, around superintendency. But there's a need for stability system-wide. And I mean, if we do look at a number and say that, you know, 95%, I can't confirm, it's based on Mr. Bishop.
Ninety-five people, not a lot.
Ninety-five people, which is a healthy percent, yeah, of folks that are non-PTS. There is a stability concern, I think, that permeates the school system that arguably extends beyond central. Now, the superintendent is the instructional leader of the district, and a lot of that permeates from that office clearly. But I think that the, being able to offer stability on all fronts is a commonly shared desire. I think that's fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinney.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of questions. A lot has been said about stability. Being in business, usually stability is keeping people in place and keeping positions filled. I hate to make it sound so simple, but we have a business manager vacancy. We have that has not received the contract, he's supposed to receive the contract at the beginning of the year. Whatever happened, happened, again, I wasn't here. I'm learning a lot about what happened and trying to put the pieces together with some excellent interviews. He's a fine gentleman, he's willing to come back and work with anybody to bridge whatever has to be bridged for the report. We also have West Street Principal. And our teachers at West Street deserve to have a principal quickly, to put together the plan with that for September. We have children going to school. Then at the same time, we have a middle school that has very strong problems in discipline in various other areas and that needs an administrative leadership on that side of the building. It's a five-acre building, we're very familiar with the issue. You're going to be walking into a lot of similar vacancies. And that's why the way I'm looking at this is, Ms. Stanton is a valuable asset. I think that, you know, if you were to fill the superintendency and she would become the curriculum coordinator, you are pushing more work back into the administrative team. At the same time, that you both can get together and maybe, you know, take care of some of these other problems that we have in the district. My two questions, with all of what we have on the plate, and I know that I'm, as much as they say we have experience, a lot of things that I've seen since I've landed, I'm just shocked. So, I have to stop, step back, and the one thing I'm not going to do is wait. And there's been enough waiting, that's why I think, my question is, when can you start? And my second question is, salary-wise, are you willing to work for what we have already budgeted? As a per diem, that's in the budget now, because we have budget issues that the budget subcommittee has to go and work on.
Sure. A few interesting points. One is that, so naturally, although not through, that is to suggest not through all kinds of weird things happening at Dover Sherwood. When I stepped into the superintendency, system-wide, I had 53 positions. I mean, I'm talking from Busch Driver Jan or Food, I mean, every, the whole kind of shooting match, all the way through. But I bring that up only because the leadership team, like the high school principal, had been there for 33 years and offered incredible stability, she retired, and there was a lot of that, there was a... So, I only offer that, Mr. Lazza, to suggest that I have experience in building teams. I understand it's not a one-person operation. I would look very carefully at not just potentially internal people, but looking externally to bring people in. I, just my sense is that sometimes there seems to be, in the system here, there seems to be an instinct of kind of moving people around from within. It's not necessarily what you want to do. It's not, sometimes it's perfect. But one thing, you can move someone, and that can create really a lot of instability for a school. It can create instability, I mean, so you have to be, I consider myself very adept at the strategy behind building a team. So, to Ms. Condon's question, although that would be a challenge, that is also something that I sort of get jazzed about, you know, the notion behind. And it's all about also creating culture of stability, where people feel like there is a rudder on the ship, there isn't going to be a change in leadership that, you know, they can really buy in and stay the course. I would, if we moved in this direction, I would immediately end all other things that I'm looking at internationally, including my trip last week to Armenia. I would consider all of those things closed and move into position as quickly as the school committee would see fit. And yes, I would operate within the confines of the budget schema in terms of salary. It's more about the position, it's more about doing good work.
Thank you. Any other questions by any other school committee members?
Of Mr. Bliss? Of Mr. Bliss.
Of Mr. Bliss. Or if you have an open statement, feel free of the situation, it's fine, as long as it pertains to the appointment. If you have a comment.
No, I think...
Okay. Think something funny, Ms. Quinney?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think you introduced this as an interview and deciding where we were going, and now you've just referred to it as the appointment.
No, we have an interview, and I offered members to make comment as long as it pertains to the interview. In other words, something that has went on here. So, it's fine, if you have no comment, just don't comment. I just thought you had something to say about the interview.
No, I, if we're all done with Mr. Bliss, thanking for his time, are we going to continue discussion on the interim superintendent?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And that's why I said, if you'd like to comment or to have discussion, it's open. If everybody's completed with Mr. Bliss, as far as questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we employ Mr. Bliss in a position of superintendent.
There's a motion, or a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Bishop, and a second by Miss Condon. Discussion on the appointment. If there is no discussion, I'm sorry, just, Dr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I just want to basically make a statement regarding this. I believe that this is actually, should not be viewed as a negative by anybody in this community, particularly the school community. I believe that if we were to vote this tonight, it should be viewed as a positive. It's adding, it's actually adding a huge amount of experience and intellectual capacity to the operations of this district in the interim, so we can identify somebody who can really take on the leadership role long-term. And at the same time, I would very much like to express my appreciation for what Ms. Stanton's done with her acting assistant superintendent, teaching and learning, Bill Latroy, over the course of the past six months or so, in putting the AIP together. It certainly is a draft version that I've seen, I haven't seen the final version yet, but that version is much, much improved over what we saw last year. And I think that Mr. Bliss has a solid, expressed a solid commitment to really use that document and work with the existing people to the best we can to ensure that that's implemented. And I think this is a very positive thing the district will do. I think it's going to relieve some pressure from some people in being able to accomplish some of the things that we need to do. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Any other discussion on that?
Just so that I understand, because again, just being here two days. The current superintendent, how long has she been in the position as acting superintendent?
How long have you been in the position?
Six months, I'm sure.
And prior to that, you were, I'm sorry?
Assistant superintendent.
For how long?
Teaching and learning, six months.
And prior to that, did you have any experience as an assistant superintendent or superintendent?
No.
Personally, I'd like to thank Ms. Stanton for all the work that you have done. And I'm sorry that I haven't met with you or haven't had the opportunity to work with you. I feel bad that you're kind of, for a district that's a level four district, to have to step into that kind of role and do what you did, I find it commendable, I really do. I think, again, I always go to fiscal responsibility and teamwork. And I think you have built a team in the AIP, I haven't read it, but it looks like you did some good work there. But I'm really concerned about the leadership, we got it finances in the district. I don't want to go down the road of a $2 million deficit. I mean, and I'm looking at somebody that has the overall management experience because I think some of those things that we need to address in the short term are very key. And it's very difficult to figure out where I'm going with this tonight, but thank you for what you've done.
Any other comments? Miss Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is all new to me with the interview this evening. I too only found out about it not too long ago. But my thought process in tonight was that when Mr. Nemberco stepped in, I told him we had three months, three months to make things right. Since then, we've had three interim superintendents. I made a bad decision when we put a previous person in. And I wanted to do a search the next time. Time is of the essence, I feel right now. I think this district needs a strong leader, somebody with experience to come in in an interim basis until we can find a permanent superintendent for this district. These children, these students in our district, only have one chance. They have one chance. And I think that if we don't put the best leader, budget person, motivator, person who will work well with the committee in place at this time, with school starting in five weeks, that would do a disservice to the district. I, as a committee member, feel that the communication hasn't been strong. I still, other than the website, haven't even been made aware that the principal of West Street School had resigned other than maybe like an email a week or two ago. So, right now, how I'm basing my decision on this is that I just think that we need experience within the next couple of months. There's a new principal to be hired, there's a budget that we have to work out. And I'm basing this on the students of the district, that they only have one shot. And that's why I'm doing the thing I'm doing this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to address the budget issue that seems to be coming up. The school committee was provided with a line item budget that was aligned with the budget that was set by the town council. It was an action of the committee, that is the reason that we don't have an approved budget at this time. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
Mr. Lazza?
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
I'm going to take off what Dr. Page had to say about adding another layer of quality. I think Ms. Stanton has done a yeoman's job in keeping things afloat under some tremendously challenging conditions. My concern is that I really believe the curriculum director needs to really get hold of restoring our curriculum revision cycle that Dale Hamley started five or eight years ago. We had a situation back then, and I don't want to see us continue to have our textbooks become outdated, our curriculum to not be aligned to where it needs to be aligned. These are issues that need absolute attention. Last year's school budget and this year's school budget have appropriated $10,000 for textbooks. Now, I know this line item says $114,000, but that's $104,000 that's already been earmarked on a three-year contract for elementary, genational geographic series. So, in essence, we are appropriating $5 per student in the district per year per textbook, which means for every 20 students, we can buy one textbook. That's unacceptable, we are going to be so far behind. Thankfully, Mr. Town Council, at one of their meetings in the last month, appropriated $200,000 to replace science textbooks. And somehow, never seen to leave this building three years ago and make it up to Cutori Road. The students deserve to have... The students deserve to have the latest, we do not want to fall back. We have tremendous five- or six-year curriculum recycle program in place that disappeared. We need to have that back, we need to stay current. Things are changing, we've gone, well, I'm going to leave it right there. But I think Miss Stanton is a tremendous worker, and I think the job she's going to do on curriculum, I think is going to be duly noted. That's all I have.
Any other discussion before we request?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I just want to say that I've been on this committee for a year and a half. And through that year and a half, I too have seen the seat change three times of the superintendent or interim superintendent. And in the past, I'd seen a lot of backdoor things happening, meetings that I was not aware of, or discussions that I was not aware of. Transparency is important to me. If I don't know what's going on, I can't make the right decisions. I just, whoever is going to fill that seat? I, I ask that it is as transparent as can be, that these backdoor meetings or these backdoor decisions are stopped. It has happened too long, you know, starting back with the person that was here when I was here. And I'm not going to put names because that's not the person that I am. I just believe in transparency, I believe in honesty. And I think that that's what's going to earn the respect of the faculty, of the students, of the administration. Without that, and the community. And without that, we're back at square one. That's all I have.
Any other questions? In a closing comment, I would just like to tailor off of Mr. Libio.
Alivo.
Alivo, I'm sorry. There are a lot of stories that we can talk about tonight. They're not good stories, they're very negative stories. And I know this committee, for the most part, wants to stay positive. We promised ourselves, and we all came together, that we will move this district forward. And if people make mistakes, there is professional development, there is mentoring. Removal, it should be last resort, as we used to say with Mr. Jovan. But the stories, I don't want to talk about why we're doing, you know, there are a lot of stories that can justify this move and what we're doing here. But then what, to hurt somebody else, to climb the ladder and to move a district forward? I'm not interested in that, I've been in government long enough. Southbridge politics has been a blood sport for years. They want to call names, that's their thing. The bottom line is, the people went to the polls and they're very upset. And I listened to each and every one of those people that went to the polls and in the coffee shops, on the streets. And they're mad. And they said, "Go there and straighten it out, do what you have to do." And I think what we're trying to do here, and again, this is no reflection on Miss Stanton. Miss Stanton has been thrown into a position and bounced around in some instances. And I personally think, I walk in there and I look at her and I think, wow, we need help up here. And I think this move here is what we are trying to do in a positive manner. We know we have problems. I know I've made mistakes, everybody's made mistakes. Let's put the mistakes behind, let's draw the line in the sand. Let's start here tonight and see if we can move forward as a team. Because I can guarantee you one thing, I do understand what a team is, and I do understand what winning is. And Southbridge has to be put back up on that pedestal. And you are the MVPs, the teachers, you're the only ones that can do that. But we need management, we need support for you to get the job done. And I think that's what the school committee is trying to do here. We will disagree, we will argue, we will debate. But the bottom line is, I think the bottom line is that we're all in favor of pushing the district forward. So that's where we're coming from. If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
No.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Six, one, it passes. Walk through this, you have a comment? Now that you're...
That's been in the agreement of finances and stuff, right? Has that been in the...
You may even have to work on that.
Yeah. We have to work on that.
Yeah, no, I'm going to have to work on that.
No, I just think, Mr. Lazo, thank you, Mr. Chair, that I really do, I think it's a great point you make about drawing line in the sand and trying to just be forward-thinking and moving forward as a community, as a community of learners and as a community of employees. We owe it to the kids, we owe it to the kids in the town of Southbridge to do what needs to be done. And I look forward to, as long as the pleasure of the committee, to doing my job and making sure that happens. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much. We're going to recess. We're going to recess for a bathroom call, just like this.
Before we recess, you want to ask that I, because I had the same question, start date?
Tomorrow.
Tonight? No, I'm just kidding, no, seriously, start date, that's...
One negotiation, you've got to negotiate.
I'd like you to sit down immediately and, yeah, with Miss Stanton, I'm coming in tomorrow also. I don't know if I can help. We're going to recess for five to 10 minutes for a bathroom break, and then after, we're going to reconvene for the purpose of superintendent search. Thank you. Call meeting back to order. Let's go, Mr. President. Moving on to agenda item number four, superintendent search. I just want to comment before we get going. It's been past practice that the chairman appoints the search committee. Chairman and the committee itself. I thought that it would be a better idea to come in front of the school committee and get some input, ideas, fed into the chair before the chair makes the appointment. So tonight, what I want to do is, is open up, I mean, this is one of those things we want to move quickly as far as getting a full-time superintendent. I know that the public, the school system, and I know the committee members are anxious. So at this time, yeah, I'd like to open it up, there's a ton of things to talk about. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Page.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to communicate to the rest of the school committee members. I've put together a couple of ideas, some parameters for superintendent search committee that I feel are important, sort of high-level kind of things, just as maybe to form a basis for discussion. And the first one is, in my opinion, the search committee should be comprised of school committee members, but they should not represent a majority of the search committee, nor a quorum of the school committee. Therefore, in our case, with a seven-member board, there should be a maximum of three school committee members should be represented on the search committee. That does not necessarily mean that we have to have three, it just means that that would be an upper limit, in my opinion, as to what we have. I believe that the selection of the superintendent of schools will likely outlast the tenure of most of us, whether or not we seek reelection or aren't reelected. This board appoints a new superintendent, the tenure of that person will supersede us, given a three-year contract. Therefore, the stakeholders that represent the broader educational community, I think it's really imperative that they be involved in the search committee. Another thing in terms of the size of it, we'd like to involve a lot of people, but it can't be too unwieldy in some ways, because that, like, results in delays due to scheduling conflicts and so forth, and being able to conduct meetings in a timely fashion. So therefore, my recommendation, as, again, this is part of, open for discussion, is the search committee comprising a minimum of seven and possibly a maximum of nine members to be recommended. Having said that, in order to receive, if we wish, a broader input from the stakeholders within the educational community and the community of Southbridge, we could consider including other interested individuals that be willing to serve as observers or alternates. And again, these are just ideas that I have. Such that in the event that a committee member, a search committee member is unable to attend either a key meeting or must withdraw from the search committee due to unforeseen circumstances, the alternate will have participated in the entire process and therefore is capable of casting necessary votes. In that case, the alternate must have attended all previous search committee meetings. Nonetheless, the alternates will be provided the opportunity to express their opinions to the search committee, but they wouldn't be voting numbers on the search committee. In terms of what kind of people to have on the committee, I think that it should be either town residents or those that have a close affiliation with the Southbridge public school system, such as being employed here currently or previously, or have some other relevant professional relationship with the town of Southbridge. In addition, to the extent possible, search committee members should have a good understanding of what the role and responsibilities of the superintendent of schools is. Town residents employed as professionals in maybe other school districts, or those having affiliations with school activities could be examples of those types of people. If possible, also, I think it would be useful to consider whether a member of the town government should be represented on the search committee, provided they have relevant knowledge of the duties and responsibilities of the position of the superintendent of schools. And so I just wanted to throw that out there to kind of lead off the discussion and kind of put, just the framework that I'm thinking could comprise what the search committee could look like, to start off. That's all.
Mr. Jovan?
Thank you, Dr. Page, through you to Dr. Page, thank you for putting this together. I would say that you are correct, it cannot be more than three school committee members, because any decision made by that board, our body, would result in a quorum. So therefore, three is the maximum. I do believe that outside people should be involved in the process. I would like to see the number of being nine. I think you, you know, seven with the three school committees, you know, leaves a little bit small. I wouldn't want any larger than nine. Last search that I participated in, I think we had too many people. And it kind of got convoluted the discussion. As far as alternates, I'm not too sure if I would have alternates involved in it. It, you know, it should be, you have nine people involved. Those meetings are executive session meetings, so you're bound to the executive session for search committees. So I would say that you should narrow the scope to that. But other than that, as far as town government, I'm not too sure. I mean, town government doesn't put us on a search, or a school committee member is on a search for a town manager. I mean, I've gone both ways with that. That was a discussion we had before when we did the last search. But like I said, they don't put us on it, it really should be the stakeholders in the school district. It's the job of the search committee to identify the best candidate and also vet them that they're going to have, hopefully, the right relationship with town side people. Those would be my points. Thank you.
Anybody else? Do we use, what's your feeling on using MASC? As a commander?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm not sure where the contract may lie with MASC. I mean, what's that?
There is no signed contract.
There is no signed contract. In the previous two searches that I've been part of, we used NESDEC in one. I'm not sure what that, do you remember what that meant? New England Association of School District Committees or something like that? Thank you, thank you. We used M1 search, and we used MASC in one search, and the other search. NESDEC I liked as far as the search committee at that time, because they were doing other work for us. At that time, they did, I wasn't proud of any interviews, but I just remember going back to what we had participated in. They had done a survey, or they had done our, for the school building project as well. They had to do the demographics and all that, so that's why we're using one of that. MASC? I have a lot of respect for the people that are involved in MASC. However, what I've heard over the years is they give you the same spiel over and over again. The pool is always going to be shallow when it comes to the number of candidates. They're going to say, maybe you should hold off until the pool gets open. I don't think, you know, MASC and NESDEC both came in, we'll do, let's do focus groups and all that. I think everybody knows what the issues are in the town of Southbridge, everybody knows what superintendent we're looking for or the town's looking for. A lot of that stuff doesn't need to be done. They may be able to, maybe vet some of the, I don't even know if I wanted them to vet the candidates because I don't think they'll put forward the candidates, all the candidates. That should be the search committee's responsibility to be able to go through those candidates, to do a background search. Maybe we invest in, you know, on show the police department, if we have assigned some for core checks and everything, they could do it. Or we hire a private investigator firm of some sort, just to do some, there's a lot of, in my work as an investigator, there's a lot of companies out there that can do social media searches and that to get that. So I'm conflicted about whether I would want to spend the money for a search firm.
Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The only option we have is MASC, as every other search firm has opted to not assist us with the search at this time.
And on that note, I believe, and on that note, I believe we already voted on MASC to do the search and that authorized them to start putting together a survey of some sort so that we can go ahead and start pushing the survey to the teachers. The one thing that I would like to see in the search, I would like to see, you know, a couple of teachers on there, community members, and people who have worked in groups such as PTA and stuff, to be on this search committee. I mean, these people have, have and work closely with the children of this district. And I think that those are the, that's the input that we honestly and truly need is their input. With that, are we going to start taking applications? How are we going to select the people that are ultimately in and on the committee?
Just to add a little bit to that, I was told that there was a list in the front office, but we couldn't find the list. I talked to Bill and I talked to superintendent, and we couldn't find a list. So we, Bill and I talked, and we said we're going to hold off and get some information from this. I know that I have a ton of people calling. I can, you know, they've been approaching me, and I want to be on the search, and teachers, and administrators, and citizens. But what I was saying, and that's why I won't have this meeting. I mean, if we're going to open it up for another week, I don't want to take a long-term search and drag it out
No, absolutely not.
and make it warm and fuzzy and end up not having the job done in a timely manner. So that's why I want input from the committee. And we will definitely, you know, I will come back and work together, because that's what's going to be going.
Then I suggest that we, we set up a list or something up here at front office and give it a week. And have people come in that are interested, with a letter of intent to serve on this committee. And a letter of understanding, once, if they are selected, a letter of understanding that you are committed to this timeframe, be it three months, be it six months, be it a year. This is what we're doing. Because if we, in three months or in six months, don't like what we find, you know, we're going to be pushing forward with continuing the search. You know, so that, you know, that is, those are my concerns and my thoughts on that.
Ms. Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the liberty of attending searching for a new superintendent last year at the MASC convention. We received a guide, a checklist for the committee. So with the previous school committee, I had put together a superintendent search process with a timeline based on what information I had received from attending that course. And my first recommendation to the committee would be to come up with a job description for that job of superintendent. We previously had come up, the previous school committee had a job description for that of the superintendent, which I could hand to you and you could make copies of. And maybe if the school committee thought that we wanted to change anything, we could, as a starting point. The next order of business on that superintendent search timeline was the search committee. And we could decide on a week, maybe two weeks, to collect letters of intent from interested community members. community members, and the school committee could approve those letters of intent, and then have that maybe be a week, two weeks, that would be submitted to the school committee chair, and then maybe at one of our school committee meetings, we could have the school committee nomination and approval, where the school committee would meet to select community members to serve on the screening committee. And then that screening committee, after having the school committee approval of being that screening committee, could start to meet, advertise for the position, establish search protocols, formal application, list of requirements for submission, a checklist once the application is received, and so on. But that would be my recommendation to the committee, would be to get together, come up with a job description within the next couple of weeks. During that timeframe, I would recommend that the committee collect letters of intent from interested members that maybe could be collected by the chair of the committee, and then the committee could meet at one of our subsequent meetings to nominate and approve members of that committee, and then have that committee move forward. So that's open for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no, I think the nine people having a process that people could email their letters of intent, that those could then re-review, is, sounds fine regarding the search committee itself. With the search process, my recommendation would be that we start this, establishing a committee, but in, while that process is coming out, coming up with a leadership profile, what do we want to see in a superintendent? So beyond a job description per se, so that we have kind of, this is the candidate that we're looking for. And in order, I think, to do that transparently and with community involvement, we would have to do some sort of focus groups or online survey to get to the teachers, to parents, to stakeholders in the community, to basically say, what is your vision, or what is the leadership profile of your next superintendent? What qualities do they have? What do you want to see brought to that position? What does that look like? To get a better picture of what that person, that profile, and their leadership style and capacity would be. And then from there, say, this is what we're looking for. So when we're putting together a job description, it encapsulates that, but it also gives parameters for who they're going to screen in or screen out. So if we have a profile, and applicants might be highly qualified but not necessarily fit that leadership profile, that would give criteria for kind of making that group smaller, and it also gives the community input at the front end rather than just at the back end, to kind of say, this is our superintendent for the district. All these people are part of that process, and to be able to define what that superintendent...
So you're favoring focus groups?
Well, not, it doesn't have to be a focus group, but I would say that we need to establish a leadership profile, which is above and beyond a job description. And that should come from community stakeholders, and how we choose to go about that, I think, is up for discussion, but I think that that is an essential part in this search process.
We took a, we had different groups, and we worked on, I've been on different searches, and one of them came up with a brilliant idea. They wanted an educational architect. At the time, the district needed to reconstruct, and so they, that's where they came from. But the public had tremendous amount of input, and the committee was large, and there were goods, goods and bads in both. But that's why I want to get the feedback from all the committee members as far as, it's not quite a focus group, it's more of an image of what you want as a superintendent.
Right, a leadership profile. And I think if you have people that are interested and are submitting their applications, you could get their input at the beginning as well, and if they're not selected, they've still had a role in that process, as well as surveying teachers. And I'm sure the PTA has an email list that they could send out, or have, you know, maybe something at the library or somewhere else, and give people the opportunity to kind of say, what is your vision for our next superintendent? What qualities do they have? What's their leadership style? What experience do they have? And kind of start there.
Chris has a question.
That's one of the first, that's what Ms. Quinney answered.
I'll go ahead.
Do you have an example of what one of those looks like?
MASC has a bunch of different things that they talked about, like discussing like the challenges that are going to face you, what assistance you need.
It feels like a questionnaire that people fill out?
Yes, right, exactly. MASC has some basic ones, but it would kind of get to that leadership profile.
I just want to ask a question. Does this take place prior to the selection of the search committee?
I think the search committee can start selecting that process, but if we can get this process out and make the community aware, this is what we're doing, this is what we're looking for, we want your input upfront before we start down that road of accepting candidates applicants.
Before you start screening candidates?
Yes.
Before you start screening candidates for the search committee?
No.
No, okay. This is after the search, Mrs. Quinney?
Well, it can be at the same time. I don't think it has to be, we do one and then we do the other.
One doesn't have to be before the other.
With respect to that, I actually would welcome that in the same forum that we had for that community forum. I thought it was a great turnout, and I think to open it up to something like that, and get, and get the input from that, have a recorder at night, and just kind of take the minutes and then, you know, compile them all together, and, you know, then we have had and heard and given everybody that voice. There was talks about, you know, getting emailed applications for this, for people who are interested in serving on this community. In, in respect to being transparent, I think that those should not be emailed to us. I think that we should have a central location, front office, to bring them in here, and if they are interested, to go that little extra mile and bring their application or their letter of intent to the office. In that way, no school committee member has touched it or anything, and have, have seen it before, and this is coming straight from there. With respect to the nine members, I would like to see two alternates on there, because I know that I had to walk away from the principal search last year because of work, work things, so, and we did have alternates there last year, and I thought that that was a good thing.
Thank you. I, to Mr. Leavell's point, I think emailing them gives, and it can be emailed to whichever person at central office, we decide, but I think asking somebody to walk in, if somebody is working and they can't get here till seven o'clock, or they work till five o'clock, that's excluding a whole bunch of people who might want to be involved in the process. So I would request that we do both.
Well, if it's done to somebody in front of...
What are you doing, Chris? When we, I talked to Bill, and I talked to Superintendent, and I'm sure Mr. Boyce understands that, when we ran the search last time, everything went to the front office.
Right, and then that's...
The front office gets it, the time dates, and, you know, so we know everything when it came in, who it was, stuff like that. So we're going to do the same thing.
Chair, could I, could I recommend some dates to try to move this along, please?
Go ahead.
At the next, at a meeting on the 28th, could we make it public to be, to the public, that we are looking for people to serve on this committee, and that their letter of interest should be, whatever the format we're going to use, should be submitted by the 7th of August? I think that's a 10-day window. It's about a 10-minute job to write a letter, so, and if 10 days, and maybe if you use the U.S. Postal Service, I'm sure we'll get it here in plenty of time. After the 7th, on the 11th, on the 7th, I, on the 11th rather, at the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, we should appoint the committee, I would say, at that point. Would that be, would that be after time to...
Well, should we...
I'm not quite sure when Mrs. Quinney's group thing wants to go. I'm still not sure on that one. We'll talk later.
No, I, I think that it, that is key to have the community input, but shouldn't we try to figure out the three people on the school committee?
That usually happens after the committee is formed.
Right, right.
The focus group, well, I'm calling it focus groups, but the, the work afterwards.
Should we at least try to figure out the people who, of our committee, who are going to serve as the three school committee members?
You can let me know who wants to be on, and we'll take a list, and we'll take three. And when you talk about that, that's, that's the easiest possible process. I think the main thing is, if we can get it up on the website, Bill, that we're accepting, you know, letters of intent to be on the search committee. I'm going to be in tomorrow anyways, due to the agenda, so we'll talk about it, and we'll format it where...
Does MASC have anything that, for that? Like any verbiage for that, maybe? Like, you know, so that we, there's, there's something we can put on there, or how you want that worded, the exact worded would be great to have from the committee? I don't think we should be making that up.
We could come up with something.
Yeah. I don't think any of MASC does that.
And then to finish my, my, I'd like to have the search committee organizational meeting on the 18th.
Search committee meeting on the 18th?
Search committee organizational meeting. So, I mean, you can go through the job description of superintendent, when we're going to have, when we're going to invite the, whoever's on the committee, when we're going to invite the community into express their requests or thoughts on what the new superintendent should look like. I just don't want this to be this like this. Well, we'll get to that, because you, we all have lives, and we all know how busy we get, and if we put definitive dates down, then all of a sudden, it's in your calendar, so don't put anything else in there. I make that motion for all those dates.
Any names to announce the search? You said the 11th?
7th, letters will be in. Letters have to be by the 7th, at four o'clock, I think we close on Friday. Four's a business. Before four o'clock, business office closes.
On the 7th?
On the 11th, we should have, the committee will be established.
Is there something on the 7th?
And then on the 18th, all of those who are on the committee will have their organizational meeting, proceed from there.
So will he announce in between there who's going to be on the committee?
On the 11th. We appoint the committee on the 11th at a school committee.
Is that, is that a vote of the committee, Mr. Chairman, or is that...
No, that's going to happen. We're going to take care of it. All this input's going to go in, we're going to take care of it in front of us.
We should be voting on that right now.
You want to put, you want to put a motion on the floor to have these dates, and, you know, a motion, go ahead.
You did, you did.
Oh, well, is there a second? Motion's second, discussion on these dates. Is there no discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any unanimous vote?
School committee members on... No, the school just worried you're going to be on there.
Is there any other discussion on the search? Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of compiled through what was available on MASC, the sort of timeline if we're looking to do a expedited search, and it's one month to develop the criteria, search parameters, focus group surveys, and then advertise. It's, according to MASC, it should be at least six weeks from post to close, and then screen applicants, that should take one to two weeks, and then the interview, one to two weeks, typically a break of one week in between, and then visit finalists here, and then go, site visits here, and then site visits wherever they are currently employed. And that comes out to about three months, that timeline.
I guess the question that I have is, what level are we using either MASC or not using MASC? I just like to get that clarified before we move forward, because, just, just to see what, how are we going to proceed with that?
I think previously, you know, when we talked to them about doing the search, my understanding was from Chairwoman McGoughlin was that they, they were going to basically help us do the survey kind of stuff that Ms. Quinney was just talking about. And then if we wanted to enlist their services beyond that, then we put a contract of all that kind of stuff in place. We did receive some samples of some surveys that they put together. It's just a matter of, you know, that may be something that we can handle in-house. I mean, I know that, you know, where I work, people use Survey Monkey and stuff all the time, and it supposedly works well on really large scale. And we have, we have students that survey 10,000 people for projects. So it might be something that we can just handle internally within the central office in terms of managing the survey. We just have to decide on what questions do we want, and as long as we have the...
Would we leave that to the search committee?
Yeah, we'd leave that to the search committee.
As far as the search?
Yeah. The search committee really should be doing it.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and, but if, also for any other school committee members that might not be on that search committee, I think, I don't have a desire to serve on the, on the superintendent's search committee right now, because I think I would like to focus more on budgetary issues than the search. I think if you, if anybody does have those survey questions that they could forward, so they could be forwarded to newer members, and perhaps that we could just give some input and forward whatever school committee input we have as the questions to that search committee to say, hey, this is a question I think is important in that survey. And I think, given the timeline, by the time the search committee does get appointed and ready to set their timetable, teachers should be back, so I think that would give them an opportunity to have their emails. Whoever teaches don't search their emails, we send the survey to teachers, they'll have an opportunity to have some feedback as well. So I think that timeline may line up pretty nicely.
Any input?
So the question regarding MASC, the other thing that we said that we would utilize them for was utilizing their network in order to recruit candidates from other places, and for coming up with an advertisement and those sorts of things along the way, were things that we discussed.
Ms. Quinney? The posting the advertisement, I know in the previous search committees, it was actually the school committee that drafted the advertisement, and then we really sat down and said, but I think that can be done with the search committee as well, but I think, again, all the school committee could have some input into some of the things they'd like to see on that. But that was simply a pamphlet that we put together. That's where we came up with that educational architect when we searched, and we got Dr. Hanley. That was kind of what the school committee was looking for, as well as the public, so we may not need them to develop it, but they do have the network.
It was more, yeah, the network to get things out, rather than just posting it on school spring and hoping for the best.
Yeah.
What is the price tag for, for the viewing people to use MASC?
The budget is $30,000.
Yeah, I think...
I think they said the max would be $9,000.
Yeah, nine to twelve, $9,000.
Well, I do know in the budget, it was budgeted $30,000.
Because that was what he said.
I think to do, yeah, it was, that's the nine actual, seventy-five to fifty thousand for search consultants.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Could I just add, maybe rather than debate this tonight, if, if there is a proposal from MASC, they were selected for the newer members, if we could get a copy of that and send that to us in a packet, or any information that they may have provided as an outline, just, and then we can look through it and at the next school committee meeting, if we have any questions come up in the interest of time tonight.
Okay. Any other what? Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The previous school committee did receive sample surveys from focus, different focus groups, from Palmer, Marshfield, that we had emailed to us, that I would, I could forward to the other school committee members, so they could look through those. Some of those searches have been completed, but just some sample questions. The other point that I just wanted to make, that on August 24th in the school calendar is when the school district will be doing open houses at the different schools. On PTA, I had previous experience with open house, that's when a lot of parents or family members will come into the school, and previously, through the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, we had handed out surveys at that time. I think we had 300 families that filled out those surveys, which was a great response from the community and parents. So if we were going to do it online, great, it is easier online, or maybe have iPads available for when people are coming into, to those open houses on the 24th, and maybe ask them on an iPad, could you fill this out? Because that way, we could target a lot of people from parents in the community. So that's just a recommendation for the search committee to think about, and I just wanted to say that I am very interested in serving on that superintendent's search committee. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, move on to Agenda Item Number Five, adjournment?
Someone.
Motion's second?